Let your allegiance.
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Ms. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Bash?
Here.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Paul is here. Mr. Raffelson?
Yes.
Ms. Fant Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Here.
Ms. Dobson's accent. Mr. Cobb?
Here.
All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved to approve the agendas presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's go.
Is yours now?
No.
What did you vote?
Oh, bash.
Do you vote yea- or do you vote?
Yeah, yay.
Okay.
Yay.
I'll sign out and sign back in and see what. Thanks, Paige.
All right, motion case seven zero. Public announcements, recognition, upcoming events.
I always, when I see what I put in here, I was like, I could have put a lot more stuff in there. But Friday's picture day, so that's a big day here at school and, you know, I've got to dress up for that and make sure I comb my hair so I'm able to make a picture. Annual meeting and budget hearing is September twenty seventh. That'll be before our regular meeting next time. And then just some neat information here. One of our fourth graders, Genevieve Davis, is in the Guinness Book of Records from what I understand, like, the second time for the longest frisbee throw. She did that previously and then someone beat her and then she did it again and not beat that person. So I thought that was pretty neat. Big thank you to Evansville Ford and Pat Carr. He really values the school district and what we do for the community. And so his dealership donated an oil change, free oil change, to every school employee. And I thought that was a nice gesture on his behalf. And then lastly, I don't have it on here, but I want to just do a shout out to two of our contracted partners for school, our food service with Armark and our bus company, Go Right Way. Sometimes those things are, you know, really challenges to get up and running with the school year. But from what I've observed and what I've heard from others, both have hit the ground running and are doing a nice job, which makes our jobs a lot easier with getting the school year started. That's the public announcements for this.
Could I add Hall of Fame is the weekend of September twenty ninth, the game from twenty eighth to twenty ninth. Hall of Fame induction at the Red Marne twenty two thirty.
Yep. Any other? All right, any public presentations? Nope. If not, looks like we got a high school representative here. Declan, you want to say a little bit about yourself?
Hi.
Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Declan Cobb. I'm one of the board representatives for this year. The other one being Kennedy Dobson, but she unfortunately couldn't attend tonight. And we're really excited to do a lot of, do a lot of work here and plan to really make some differences hopefully and really connect with the students with the school board this upcoming year. I'm a senior at Evansville. I really like being in the band and that's about it. Oh, and I'm a massive fan of history, as some of you may know.
Quiz Bowl.
And Quiz Bowl, yes. I competed several times.
Good.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
All right, thank you. Student council overnight retreat request.
Okay. Hello, my name is Dawson Cuff. I am a senior at Evansville High School. And I am the Region Five SHS president for the WAC as well as the state social media board leader. And so.
Rachel Cuff, student council advisor at J.C. McKenna for more than years than I want to say. And also a member of the Region Five Collaborative Leadership Council for many years also. I will not say how many, but I see them. Yep, and then introduce yourself.
I'm a roofing carpenter and I'm the student council sergeant at arms at the middle school.
And what we are requesting is to attend the overnight WAC fall retreat. The WAC is the Wisconsin Association of School Councils. And we are, me and my mother, we serve on the CLC, so the collaborative leadership council. And what the fall retreat allows us to do is meet with all the other regional officers from around the state. And there are six regions and we, Mia Upjohn Woods in the Dells. And we plan all the upcoming year's events at that meeting. So we would like to attend that overnight retreat.
Yep, and cost to the students is lunch. So we'll go to Culver's beforehand and have some lunch. Otherwise, no cost to them. Cost to the district is helping us get there, so with the band. The two other CLC members from Evansville, Annika Crone is a freshman at Evansville High School. She is the Region Five Vice President. She served as a regional officer in the middle school also. And Mia Schwartz is the Region Five President at Dunham Junior in middle school level. So the four of us will be, hopefully, attending or driving back really late at night and going back the next day. So we hope you'll support our thing. But anytime we come and ask for things, we also want to share things that are exciting that we bring back up too. So, yep, he's going to go back to his thing. The other officers, Morgan was able to come. Our other officers are very busy with other things, which many of our most busy students have many things on their plate. So Morgan is one of the six people on our executive committee. She was able to come and share some information about the beginning of the school year.
All right, so all of our student council officers came before this, we worked before the school year as an officer team to get everything ready. And we decided our theme for this year to be sea animals. And so for our teacher appreciation, we gave them things like goldfish and Swedish fish and sea-related treats. And we put up birthday treats and boards for all the student appreciation. And we helped with this, to get the sixth grade orientation organized and help them know where they're going. And we also decided what our spirit week is going to be and it's all ready.
Yep, we had our first full council meeting today and I'm very happy to say that we, our numbers are back up to what they were pre-COVID levels. We had ninety seven or ninety eight, because one asked if they could still join. And I don't say no very easily. So ninety eight members this year in our J.C. McKenna student council. So a lot of people doing a lot of good things. And so the big test is giving them the opportunities to do the thing. Oh, I can get to the visuals. So that today they formed groups.
Yeah, we were able to form groups using our adorable sea animal theme. And so we have the red corals, the rocks that just sit there but are technically alive, you know. Purple octopi, super cool octopus. The gray stingrays, they're just, they're just awesome. Green sea turtles, of course, you've got to have turtles. Yellow sea horses. Who'd have to use that guy? He's awesome. And also the black otters. Otters. And all our groups will rotate through the different committees we've worked on, like dances, spirit days, community service, teacher appreciation, student appreciation and birthdays, and the WAC competition. And we're just really excited about all the things that are going to happen this year.
So thank you very much for all of your support all of the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Yes.
All right. Moving on, interim district administrator update.
Boy, that's a hard act to follow.
Yeah.
Oh, do you love parts with super cool octopuses on them?
Octopi.
Octopi.
I did, I did give you some candy though, so hopefully that'll.
Yes, we did we.
You got me beat. Next, I should have switched the order when I'm in front of you. So monthly, I want to come before the board and just share with you some of the key things that I've been working on. This first screen just reiterates that what I'm doing, I want to make sure aligns to our mission and vision. And then the overarching plan, I feel it's important for all leadership, especially my position to have the trust and confidence with everybody that I work with. I think the second bullet there, you know, student achievement is what we're all about. That's why we're here. So that's important. And then just growing and developing a relationship with the school board so that we can effectively lead the district. We can go to the next slide. Three key things that I feel I've been doing very well. I've met with lots of people and I try to do a lot more listening than talking, learning in all that I hear. And then try and provide leadership to all the folks I work with. And, you know, I've worked really closely with our new district staff, our business manager, Mr. Carson, Caitlin Miller, our new payroll specialist, Paige, and all the other folks in the district office. And then also with our building leadership team to, you know, look for ways to achieve those overarching goals in our mission and vision. Goal one, building the trust and confidence. There's some other things. I just mentioned working with the admin team. Working on providing support to our instructional staff with that achievement. Mentioned already, working with Mr. Carson and as well as Todd from Baird, who was providing support, helping to bridge that gap. PMA, who's been helping us with our short-term financing and our referendum. And then just teachers, I presented at the back to school day. Been communicating and writing with the employees multiple times to try to make sure that they know what I'm up to and what I'm doing and how I can support them. Emphasizing that our strategic plan and all that I do. Mr. Carson and I met with Armark staff, our food service, and collaborated with them to make sure we're all on the same page. And then here at the end of summer, sponsored a luncheon for all our summer staff and our new employees and trying to build that relationship through some social activities as well. Moving on to goal two. Again, working on that, helping to build our student achievement and move to significantly exceeds on the report card. Partnered with the admin team to develop our back-to-school learning days for our staff, which were heavily focused on student learning and instruction. Two of the key things were all the staff learn about high-quality learning opportunities and how to make them more engaging and meaningful for students. And then also working on strategies to support students with behavioral issues and how to de-escalate those effectively to keep them from becoming even a more serious issue. And then with the board, I think one of the things that I try to do, not only with the board but with all staff, is communicate, communicate, communicate. And I try as often as needed to reach out to you and keep you informed about what's going on in the board, what's going on in the district. And then we had our retreat here a few weeks ago that I thought was a good opportunity for us to learn about governance of the district and some of the ways that we could improve and grow as a board and as a district administrator. Other key things, been spending a lot of time on this first bullet, the referendum. And you'll hear a bunch of information about that tonight. Not only the, the projection of what our needs are and what it will cost our community in terms of taxes, but also the draft survey that we can look at and tweak and revise so that we're ready to approve that at the next meeting. Developing a proposal for salary, for union negotiations, so that we can help our staff to know where they're at in terms of salary for this year. We've already started looking at budget projections for next year as well as twenty five, twenty twenty-five and beyond. And then policy review, you'll see tonight, we, the policy committee of Crystal and Sandy and I, reviewed quite a few policies in that six hundred level. And I've started getting some of the seven hundreds ready for our next policy committee. I think that's it. So quite a few things. There's other things going on. But for the sake of time, I wanted to just highlight some of the key things that have been going on in my office.
All right, thanks. Next on the agenda is Director of Buildings and Grounds update.
Hello, I'm Jack Herndon, the new director of buildings and grounds. It's been a challenging start. I was asked to come and speak to you on a couple of topics that are situations we're dealing with right now. With the high school gym floor, we had a rooftop unit that was malfunctioning and the drain pan had spilled over and it carried on. So the floor is warping a bit. We immediately, as soon as I received the call on June twenty ninth, the coaches had noticed that there was water sitting on the floor. And we were in preparation for the floor to be recoded from the flooring company that installed it the previous year. So immediately it was cleaned up and dried up. And then I, the next morning, I contacted the HVAC team, which is NAMI, is our contractor that we use, and also the roofing company, just to be sure that that wasn't part of the issue, just to cover all the bases. I met with Kendall. We identified the problem. We met with the HVAC contractor, as I said. They found the problem. They repaired the problem. So then we went on about our business, making sure that everything was done in the gym areas. So everything was done prior to the floor coating. The floor was scheduled to be closed from, or the gym was scheduled to be closed from July twenty first through August first. There's, because it's an oil base coating that they put on there and it takes that long to cure. So we took care of several other problems in the gym, lights and some other things to make sure that it didn't impede the floor coating. On August first, when I opened the gym back up, we entered and we found puddles of what seemed to be the floor finish that they were putting on there. And come to find out that the rooftop unit had failed again and had spilled over. And the ceiling is made of corrugated steel and so the water naturally follows that. And that's the path of the warped floor. We've done some research with the flooring installer. They recommended that we take some steps. We did that for almost two weeks. It didn't help at all. And I had reached out to a contractor that saves gym floors that have been damaged. So that's an option in our pocket. We're talking about that right now. The gym would be closed for, well, it would be usable for gym class, but part of it would be sectioned off where they would be removing the moisture from under the, under the floor and from the wood. So they guaranteed that it would lay back down, but we're not sure that that's the option we want to go with because that is right at our deductible. And if we know the foolproof way is to replace that part of the floor, then we're talking about it, but some of us believe that that's the way that we should go. If we're going to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, which is our deductible, and that's the, almost the amount of the quote that we received for the repair that's a possibility, but they guarantee, then it's a conversation that we're going to be having. With Dr. Lutske and Tom Parsons and myself have been meeting frequently as I meet with the contractors and we talk about our options and about what's the best choice for this. My first, the first thing that I'm working on is making sure that this doesn't happen again. I told the HVAC company, by no means do we want to revisit this. It needs to be fixed correctly the first time, no Band-Aids. We need, so it's going to be kind of an expensive repair, but if it prevents this from ever happening again, I think that that's worth it. The design of the rooftop units, in the words of the HVAC contractor, is flawed. So there's two other rooftop units up there, which I had asked them to make sure that this can't happen with those as well in the future. We had had some roof issues up there. The roof is fairly new. I believe it's within two years old. And we had some, we had thirty-five patches done on that roof that was warranty work. So we're observing everything that's a possibility to make sure all of our bases are covered. I know how important athletics is to the district and to the public. And so we're taking, we're pulling all the punches and we're going to make sure that things are done right. I will keep communicating through Dr. Lutske and Tom Parsons and the board meetings to keep everyone up to speed where we're at. The gym floor is completely usable right now. It's not a terrible situation. But when you pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for a floor, you want it to be as beautiful as possible. So I will continue to work on that. And we're going to, like I said, we're going to take all the steps necessary and continue to make sure things are done right and not just patched up. That, in my opinion, is unacceptable, especially in this situation. And it is going to be very costly, but if we're going to spend that kind of money, I myself believe that we should do it the right way, do it once and be done, and just make sure that all of our bases are covered. And that brings me to part two, our HVAC challenges. I'm sure some of you have received the notes that I had written. We have had unbelievable amount of HVAC problems over the summer, trying to get everything ready for school to start, different areas of the buildings. And I don't come from an HVAC background, so it's a huge learning curve for me and I'm constantly in contact with our contractor. We do have a contract that allows us. I can call them at any time and they are supposed to walk me through on the VAS system, which is our building automated system, to program, adjust force, air, to make things work. But mechanically, things are breaking down. We have ninety-seven heat pumps at the high school. We purchased three to replace, two which are completely not working anymore. So there's no heat or air in multiple classrooms. I'm told that the lifespan of these heat pumps is about twenty years and they're just about twenty-three years old now. So this is a very costly, again, situation. But to keep our students learning, we need to keep them comfortable. We need to keep our building staff comfortable. And when you can't stay in your parameters because when it's ninety degrees in a classroom, that's unacceptable. We've been running crazy trying to keep people comfortable, whether we take fans. Our service calls have been overwhelming. The amount of money that we're spending to repair this stuff is ungodly. So I've been talking with Tom Parsons and Dr. Lutske again to set up like a five-year plan to try to remedy all of this and get the parts and the programmers that are necessary to bring the school up to date in place. And I believe in a five-year period, we should be able to do that. I added up just our service calls since July first and I believe we're at fifteen thousand nine hundred just for service calls. But it's not a thing that you can say no to. And our hands are kind of tied. We're holding off on other projects and other things that we really need to do in the district to bring the district up to the next step. But this is probably the key thing after the roofs, in my opinion. All of the roofs are replaced now. The high school roof is almost complete. We did have some water damage there. That's just another, another thing that we're dealing with. But we are working on a plan to share with everyone. I'm working with our HVAC team as well to get our costs, our estimated costs over the next five or so years to implement this plan and get things moving in the right direction so we're not having these calls and these problems and we keep our buildings safe and comfortable. Does anyone have any questions about any of that?
I do. First of all, I'm very unhappy that this stuff is happening.
First of all, I'm very unhappy that this stuff is happening. Apparently, we need to put more money towards maintenance and I don't see us doing that. And I'm curious, are, is anybody doing inspections on this stuff? Granted, the gym floor was water. Granted, it was closed. Couldn't somebody have gone up on the roof once in a while and looked at that stuff and see if there's a problem starting?
In the, in the, the beginning of summer this year, when the kids got out of school, we have, in our contract, NAMI comes and they do a service on all of the rooftop units. And everything at that time, I believe it was the first week of June, and everything was running and functioning properly. They clean the drains, they make sure that everything is in order. So they do that service and then Steve Hurley is our maintenance guy. And he does the inspections and limited service. There are only certain things that he's able to do. But identifying problems and stuff. It's been more of a catch-up right now than being that all of these things are just stacking up. And we're trying to get ahead of that. But yes, we do inspect the equipment. But again, with one maintenance guy and we have thousands of pieces of HVAC equipment that need to be serviced and upgraded, it's really hard to, because Steve is doing all the belts, the filters, the drain cleans, the condenser cleaning. There's just so many things and he's one person.
I'm not talking just basically about air conditioning. I'm talking about everything at school or in the school buildings. Somebody, I feel, should be inspecting everything every so often. Maybe not once a day or once a week, but every so often so they can see potential problems and what it takes to fix them.
I do, I do have a quote here from NAMI for that. Where it's twenty-four thousand dollars for a year for them to do that. And it's twelve thousand dollars for them to do it once a year. But our team, as they do filters and belts and they grease the pumps and this is on the heating and the air conditioning side, which is, has been our major, our major problem. They do inspect everything. They inspect, he goes through and inspects the drains, he inspects the electronics and makes sure that everything is functioning properly. But the biggest problem with the high school is the pumps and the programming. Because we have very limited access on our VAS system with the programming. So you have to physically open up every unit, every rooftop unit, and they do run heat and air. And then on Grove campus, we have like literally no control over it. The honeywell system is outdated. I received an email that went to Greg Bartelt from the contractor that he had spoken with. And he said that this campus was so outdated that they, they don't even, he said, scrap it. So we're, we're going along and Steve and I are talking a lot and inspecting things. And, but again, we're kind of playing catch-up. Once we get to a certain point and if we can get in the next several years, if we can get the programmers updated, it'll be easier to maintain and watch because you can see every aspect of what's going on with every single pump, every belt, every fan on this system. But right now, he checks, you know, thirty of them a day. And that's on top of maintaining everything else and fixing things.
There aren't, isn't anybody else on the custodial staff that can help with that?
No, the custodians are the best we have. They do an amazing job, but they are spread thin. There's one custodian per school during the day and they have to do lunches, they have to do their general cleaning. If we had extra staff, I have been talking with Steve and Tom again about a position called a float position and that's what I made up in my mind. A person that could cross-train and learn all of this stuff because we just need extra time. People in the buildings that are learning this stuff. We've been doing training in many different areas so we can do things in-house. All of our cores and keys and things like that, we were allowed to train on that so we can do that rather than paying out thousands of dollars to have somebody do that. We're able to do that in-house. But again, time is limited. These guys are doing, I believe it's forty thousand square feet of custodial work in an eight-hour shift, which thirty-five is considered high. And I could get you the exact numbers, but they are really spread thin. And I'm doing everything in my power to help them simplify, to get them the equipment they need so that they can work more efficiently so that we can address these things better. It's just, it's mainly a matter of manpower and the skill set. Because a lot of this stuff is skilled trades and we have no problem learning it. The guys are all excited about learning new things and training and helping out. They're very committed to this district. I found that out coming in because they didn't like change. So I'm working real hard to prove my dedication as well. But yes, they, they would love to do more, but we need more help. And that's something that we're going to have to look into in the future.
Two more questions.
Okay.
Is NAMI going to reimburse the district for their screw-up or?
I doubt it. That, I've been working with them and talking to them a lot about, you know, why did this happen after it was repaired? And they said it was a totally different thing, of course. And with not having knowledge of these units myself, I can't dispute that. I do as much research as I can in my limited time and I find out as much information. I ask a lot of questions. I ask questions of other contractors. What could I have done different? What should I have done? Is there someone else I could have looked at this just to have a second opinion? Things like that. We try to cover all of that because I'm really not happy about this myself. And I understand that everyone's upset and athletics is really going to be upset when that gym is closed. But we've done everything that we can to make sure that they're doing their due diligence to make sure that it's right. Not, like I said earlier, no Band-Aids. It needs to be fixed right the first time. And I believe that he had it repaired the first time. The first time, I had two of the rooftop units. There was a pipe that had exploded that was, had water in it over the winter. And that's what was, got through the drain pan. So I had him do both because you can physically see the cracks in the pipes. And so he put a different kind of pipe on there that will expand it if that ever happens again. That is part of the fall shutdown for the air conditioning unit up there. There's two coils in each of those units and they're supposed to be cleaned and flushed out every fall. And somehow, last year, that happened. So that was the cause of the first leak. So we fixed the pan, cleaned the drain, fixed the, it's a trap and it spills the condensation out onto the roof and then it goes to the roof drain. So I am trying to hold them as accountable as possible. I don't want to upset them or burn bridges because they kind of have us in a corner where we need their services or we're going to be in a whole lot of hot water. And they have been very good service-wise. It's just, I think it's just a fluke, the two situations with this single rooftop unit.
Last question. Do you keep parts on hand? Like you say, a pump has gone out. Do you have some on the shelf that you can put in? Because I know now, it used to be you could get a pump or parts you needed in one or two days. Now it might be one or two months because nobody keeps them on the shelf.
Yeah, that's exactly true. I ordered the three pumps that we're changing at the high school. I ordered them in my first month that I was here and it took them over eight weeks to get here. They got here three days before school started. And so the roof, the ceiling panels need to be taken out in the ceiling track in order to get them in because they're very large units. And we would, I love, I love the idea of having some on the shelf here so if something malfunctions then we're ready to do that and maybe we can get there in the future. But it was over twelve thousand dollars for the three units that we got. And that's, that was my point earlier as well is it's, the ninety-seven heat pumps throughout that school and they work in conjunction with rooftop units and chillers. That is a very expensive project. And as they change them, they also have to change the programmers. There's, I believe, the programmer in the panel now is an EDI panel. And as we're changing them, they're changing it to an ecostructure, which we have a lot more control over. And that's, again, where, what I was talking about earlier, with having control from the computer and you can see exactly what's happening. If something malfunctions, you know immediately something's plugged or something's stopped or a fan is not working. Or the surges in electricity that we get here, trip the VAVs. We have brand-new VAVs at the middle school that are malfunctioning. And I'm holding those people accountable because that stuff is still under warranty. And I, I take every avenue possible to not spend money on things like that. If there's a way to get it warranted or something like that, we're looking into it. It's not, I know that the budget's very tight. And again, there's things that I would love to do to bring this district up to the next level as far as LED lighting at the high school. That's, that's a huge thing in my heart right now. I would like to put a plan together over the next five or six years to get everything converted to LED for energy usage and stuff. And the ROIs and stuff, it's incredible. But I need to focus on the, keeping the schools clean and dry and not water pouring in from units. And you'll see on the first floor of the high school there's water stains on the ceiling tiles on the first floor. And there's classrooms above that, where does that come from? It's the heat pumps, the valves are leaking. We have multiple valves that I signed the contract for NAMI to replace in the gym at the high school, so we're not revisiting this. Six valves on the three rooftop units is over twelve thousand dollars. That's, that's something that I always talk to either Steve or Tom about. Any expenditures like that, it's very important to communicate and let everyone know what's going on. And that's why I believe Steve asked me to come and address this. So everyone's kind of in the know about our struggles right now. Yeah, this room's comfortable right now, but I could go to my office and I couldn't change anything. So there is, if it fails, we're going to be in a world of hurt. But we're working real hard and we're, like I said, we're trying not to spend any money. We're, you know, we're doing our best.
I know you said they're expensive. But I'm not talking just pumps, I'm talking ballast for lights and all that stuff. If we could buy some now and keep them on the shelf and in the future the price goes up, we've still got them here and it's not going to cost us as much money.
Yep.
So something to think ahead about.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's, we can talk about that some more. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, that's part of my plan though also because the change of ballast at the high school, the high school is the only building left with fluorescent. The change of ballast, it's cheaper to put an LED light in there. And the ROI on the LED light is less than a year, so.
So can I, are you done?
I'm just going to say, then what about keeping some LED units on hand? So when one goes out, you're not waiting three days, three months to be able to replace it.
I think that's a good recommendation and we can look at that.
Absolutely.
I'm Jeff.
Well, I mean, I would just like to say that, you know, you talked about a long-range plan, five years for the high school, maybe seven for Grove. We have a facilities committee and I'd like to see the facilities committee involved in that and bring a plan to the board. And I don't know if our capital projects fund, is that forty-six?
Yeah.
Do you know what's in there?
No, no, Pam.
Off the top of your head?
Yeah.
I don't have that many either.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did, when we went before summer, we did and picked what was capital and what would be referendum and we kind of separated and we were certain, we kind of prioritized that. So that, it is in order, so yes.
So that would be?
Yep.
Because I'm listening to you and it almost sounds like you're out there all on your own. And I would like for you to know that, can I finish please? That you're not on your own. You know, there's a committee and the board and, you know.
I appreciate that. It is, it does feel like I'm on my own a lot because I take responsibility for this. I am responsible for the comfort of this district and keeping everybody safe and lighted and warm. And I try to do that through communication. And I know it's been a while since I've been to a board meeting because life is crazy.
Heating and facilities has to meet more often, you know, just to get a plan together. And right now with going to referendum, it's a perfect time to get all that together and see if we can get some things worked out.
Because one of the questions that I had, when you talked about these pumps that have a twenty-year lifespan that are twenty-three years old, I was curious, John and Mitch, are those pumps something that's on the capital improvement list in the facilities committee?
That, I was just going to say, is that, the whole honeywell system, like, everything that Jack talked about is on that list. We have a list and we separate referendum versus capital and then prioritize it. Now, we've got to go back and address that and see what it is. It might make the stuff a little more prioritized, but it is in the works, yes.
And I have, I have numbers to share as well.
Yeah, you keep saying the big numbers, but you won't ever give those numbers. So I'm kind of like, we have a range here.
I don't want to put out like numbers right now because it wouldn't make any sense and it wouldn't be accurate.
You don't want to scare us and all that.
And I'm trying to stay in my budget, so. Because we still got paper towel and toilet paper to buy for the rest of the year, so. But I am very mindful of everything that's going on and I try to share everything with Dr. Lutske and Tom Parsons. And I will continue to come to the board meetings and just share information if I'm able to. And now I know the procedure. So, but thank you all for listening.
Appreciate your work. Thanks, Jeff.
My number and everything is on my emails and available. I'll get you guys all cards. You can call me or text me at any time if you have questions. I'm happy to share whatever information that I can.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. An update on District Manager's search.
Good evening and thank you for allowing Ray and Associates to be here this evening to share with you about the upcoming search for the most important person in your district, the leader of your district in terms of that. We take that very seriously. I'm going to give a moment for the rest of the team because I'm not here alone. Not only, not only you have all the Ray and Associates with you, but Dr. Anne Schultz and Dr. Dan Bitterman are also here. So Anne, do you mind introducing yourself?
Good evening.
I'm back in Wisconsin often though as my husband is serving as an interim superintendent way north up in Crandon, Wisconsin. So some of the same challenges that you're facing tonight, we've certainly been a part of. My passion has always been- Uh, my passion has always been helping boards and helping schools find great leaders. Um, I think it's, I think it's just a, the greatest thing that it gives, that we can give our children is to have good leadership, um, that really solidifies what, what direction you're headed in your district. So, um, I'm honored to be a part and hopefully can help, help your team, uh, find your next leader.
Thanks, Camille.
And Dan Bittman, good evening. Thank you so much for having us this evening and giving us an opportunity to work and learn with you. I am a superintendent in Minneapolis or near Minneapolis in the eighth largest school district in Minnesota. Um, former assistant commissioner at the Department of Ed and former director in the Clark County School District in Las Vegas, Nevada, which is the fifth largest in the United States with about 315,000 students. I've never had the privilege to work in Wisconsin, but I have a Badger who's going to be graduating in December. So I figured that's gotta be worth something. Uh, really grateful to spend some time with you and just energized by seeing administration there and the board energy and seeing the students be able to present and do so many great things there. So really excited to be part of it and hopefully we can continue to support you as you need.
Thanks, Anne and Dan. My name is Eric Divitt and, um, I have 30-plus years of education experience here in the state of Wisconsin, um, as a high school teacher, system principal, director of curriculum instruction, assistant superintendent. And then for the last 10 years, I've been higher education, preparing educators to be school leaders as principals and superintendents and directors of instruction. So, um, you, you, you'll get to know all of us a little bit better, um, through this process. Um, I know that a few of you may have been involved in my, um, in the last time that Rain Associates was here. I want to, we want to spend a few minutes going over that timeline. Um, and so we do have also, um, there's another document in your board packet. Um, this is kind of the checklist and many of these things, um, we'll try to accomplish this evening. And I also know that we are standing between a consent agenda, some other action items, another great discussion by referendum. So I'm going to try to go through with the team fairly quickly through the, um, through the PowerPoint. And, um, if you follow along with this also, I think, um, if, if I can ask the board to think about some of the responses that they'll have, um, either before I leave this evening or, um, uh, by tomorrow, the next day, I'll, I'll work with Mitch and Steve to make sure that we, we know that piece that's going forward. Because I know, I, I can sense the urgency too that you all have. And from watching some of your, you know, prior board meetings, I know you're very excited to be at this stage and staff for the next, uh, for choosing the next leader. So, um, beyond introductions, Karen Hall is our managing director. And also I know, um, Mitch and Steve have been contacting, uh, in a great deal of contact with Molly, our president of Rain Associates. Um, really I want to just quickly go over the, over, uh, the search process, answer any questions that you have related to it. And, um, then also, like I said, uh, work towards some decisions. Um, you can see the agenda there. Um, I, this is your search. I need to say that from the very beginning. Um, we have a kind of a tried and true process that we're, um, going to help you through, but there's going to be decision points along the way that we'll talk with you about in terms of how would you like to proceed in these particular areas? For example, as you see there in stakeholder engagement. It's not only the board search, but also, you know, for the entire community. So, um, you can go forward there. Uh, Paige, thank you for, uh, being my, the clicker here tonight. Um, so a couple, uh, we're going to talk through the stages of the timeline. Uh, the first stage happening this evening, meeting with the board, um, getting to know you. And, and that stage is going to happen over the next week or so. Um, stage two in there will be when we begin the process and I'll go into that a little bit more detail of interacting with stakeholders, stakeholders that the board will choose who we wish to engage with. Um, that will happen for about two or three weeks prior to the search. Um, you're going to see some dates in just a minute because I also know that you, uh, and they are flexible because once again, it's your search. But I want you to be aware of some things that we've recommended based upon, you know, conversations with you leading up to this evening. Um, the stage three is this, um, um, kind of a quiet stage for the rest of the time. You're working really hard as a school board, but kind of a quiet stage. And that's where Anne, Dan and I are working hard with the applicant pool and generating the applicant pool. Um, and then in stage four is when you begin the, um, application deadline takes place, the review of the applicants, we bring applicants to you and you, um, and then you make your choices. And then ultimately announce that final list after stage five. So I'm going to go in a little bit more detail about that and, um, and Anne and Dan will jump in as you need and I'll listen for them also. Um, we are on the 13th here and, uh, we're having the planning meeting. I want to mention that, uh, we will be reaching out to each of the individual board meetings, or board members to set up a interview with each of you to find out a little bit about what your specific individual, um, uh, views for the new leader is. The idea is to bring as many voices as possible into this process. We'll also begin the process of preparing, um, a promotional flyer, job description, the application and such. We also, as of the end of the week, will notify all of our associates. We have associates, as you've met two of them, uh, one in Colorado, one in Minnesota. We have associates all over the country that will be, um, uh, seeking out candidates for the position here in Evansville. And, um, I know that might sometimes like, sometimes the best candidate is just on the road. Um, and sometimes the best candidate is somebody, for example, I've seen this happen in the searches that I've done. I'm doing this for about 10 years. Is, uh, it's somebody that, uh, 10, 15 years ago, they left Wisconsin to become an educator in Nevada, Dan, and they decided to come back to Midwest because they, uh, because of family and so forth. And so, uh, they, they contact us. And we'll also be, um, working with constituents and stakeholders about the first meetings. So that's stage one. Stage two, um, uh, Anne, do you mind of kind of going over the stage a little bit? I could put you on the spot. Hope I might have caught her without the mic. I can jump in. Um, basically this.
I'm happy to jump in as well, Eric.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Stage two, I think Anne's having some difficulties with the microphone, so she's working through that. So stage two really is that profile development and process. So we really want to have an opportunity around the 25th of September to provide an online survey link for input. And Eric, I like what you talked about in terms of just wanting to get as much feedback from stakeholders and community that we, that we can get. We really see on the 10th of October through November as a possible timeline, really some opportunity for stakeholder group meetings. And again, really to learn with and from your stakeholders and people that you value and have a part of your program, just really wanting to understand what kind of leader will be most successful. We then have an opportunity, uh, to work with you to develop a promotional flyer draft. And as Eric said, and Anne will comment as well, that person may be really close to you and that person may be out of state, but really want to make sure that we're casting that net a long, a long way. Excuse me. And then finally, in the end of October, around the 17th, really finalizing the superintendent profile, using all that information that we've gained along the way to make sure that that profile represents exactly what you need in your district. And we heard some of those things tonight from our students as well as other administrators. That will be great feedback for us and as well as the opportunity to meet with you and to hear what's important to each of you.
Thanks, Anne. We, we are listening to hear what, what those needs are. We will not go out to seek an applicant until we've met with you and you've approved that profile and what you're looking for. Um, but we will offer suggestions. The other thing I want to mention is the October 10th and 11th date there, um, that would be the time when, uh, we would be back in the district, um, meet physically. Just as, as some of you know from my, um, my, um, resume, I'm, I'm in, uh, the Wamatoosa, Milwaukee area. So it's a quick little drive over, um, but we can also do things remotely. Um, but meeting with individuals during those days. And so I just mentioned that because I want you start thinking about school calendars. Like a couple of times that has fallen in the days when there's parent teacher conferences or something like that happening, we wouldn't want that to be a conflict. Okay? Um, stage three will be the recruiting stage, as I mentioned. Um, this is when the, um, when the application would go live on, on the Rain Associates website. We would continue to promote and we'll talk a little bit later this evening about those, those promotional, um, uh, methods, um, such as posting and, uh, at the state level, um, at the national level, any type of, uh, communication like that. And then also right now, we're looking at based upon, um, prior conversations that right around that Thanksgiving week, um, Molly, I talked to Molly again, uh, yesterday and she shared that we probably want to extend it through that Thanksgiving week because she's seen a lot of activity with, um, applicants the last couple of years with that. But we would then start to close that up. And that does mean that all applicants will be reviewed. Okay? We will review them all and, and give them full consideration. And stage four.
I just heard a beep. I want to make sure I didn't miss something from somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And stage?
Yeah, sorry.
Um, I'm not sure if Anne's, uh, volume is, is working for her right now, um, but Anne or Dan? Would you like to jump in on stage four?
Sure. So stage four is, is really the opportunity, um, for us to develop and finalize the interview questions and the procedures and then to present those top candidates to you. Um, and when then we would look right before that holiday break to be interviewing top candidates uh, for that first round, uh, with you. So excited about that. Um, and to think about, uh, really prior to, prior to the holidays, uh, interviewing the final candidates with you, um, discussing contracts during that time and really supporting you in the process of choosing your, uh, final candidate.
And Anne and Dan and I have talked about your timing is being really, really good. You're going to, um, sometimes when we're doing searches in later in spring, a superintendent or a school leader is already seeing themselves in the next school year in their existing, um, in their existing district. So we're going to have this great opportunity to talk with, um, leaders who may be experienced leaders who are interested in, and, and, and they're thinking in November, December, you know, maybe by next school year, it's time I, I'll, I'll be looking for, uh, a new position, a, a change. Um, I do want to point out that, you know, we, we, in terms of the screening process and so forth, um, we're, we're being proactive. Um, uh, some of our best candidates, our best applicants are those people who are not even thinking of changing the district right now. Um, they, uh, and it's our job and we, that's where we can help through our networks and so forth to assist with that. So that, I think we've covered stage four and five. Um, you know, the, everything from us, we can assist with the, um, with the contract negotiations, the press release and so forth, the meet and greets, all those things that take place. A couple of things, there's a couple of meetings with for sure that I would like to be on site here. Um, and that's something for you to consider, but a lot of these things can be done remotely. Um, when we do present the candidates to you, those, those semifinalists, you will see a video of all of them, okay? And be able to not only see them on paper, but see them responding to questions in a video format. Um, I think Paige, uh, we can look at a couple of examples or a couple of points just about the profile. We also have the 31 desirable characteristics. We'll be sure to, um, that help us narrow down. Those are characteristics of school leaders. Um, and we will narrow those down to the key 10 that represent Evansville. Um, we'll, uh, provide all that information to you. You will see graphs, reports from the surveys, from the focus group stakeholder meetings, along with approval of all the promotional material before we go forward. So you can be comfortable that if a candidate is talking to Anne, Dan or me, that we know you well and could say, yes, you would be the right, you would be a good match for yourself. Um, um, just a couple of things here. There's some links we don't, we won't click on or anything like that, but they're available for the boards to look at. We have board surveys that we send out, um, and also to the community. Um, I do, we will need to ask and find out if there's a need for any, um, any other languages, for example, Spanish surveys, uh, to make sure that all, all stakeholders are engaged. Um, we also, I think on the next screen, um, have just a sample both here and if you click to the next one, page two, um, that's just an example of the grid of the different groups that we would need with. Some of them, for example, meeting with the community, community leaders, for example, Rotary, uh, Chamber of Commerce, all the administrative teams, um, um, meeting with teachers, support staff. I'm just giving examples that we've done in other districts. Also, one of my favorites is meeting with the students. Uh, we often have a, 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 a stakeholder meeting with, uh, high school or middle school students like the leaders that we met this evening and find out from the students what they're looking for. If we can do it during lunch and provide pizza, we can let them turn off of course. So, um, we also, you can also take a look at the, uh, online application, pretty standard application that works that gets the information, um, that we need. And you would see those applicants for the, uh, you would see those applications for the applicants presented. I'm going to take a quick breath and see if I missed anything, Anne and or Dan, at this point.
No, I think you're great, doing a great job, Eric. I just want to reiterate that we really want to continue to hear from you and all of the information and the work that we do is based on what you believe you need. And I say you, meaning the students, the families, the staff, community and the board. So we're really excited to work with you on that. Eric, did you want to mention anything around confidentiality specific to any candidates that might apply?
Uh, can you elaborate a little bit more? I think I know where you're going, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, just in terms of we, we pride ourselves on that confidentiality, recognizing that, uh, that can be emotional for folks. And we do quite a bit of backgrounding on our candidates to make sure that the individuals we bring will meet the expectations of the board and the community.
So, um, we will do, as we present candidates, we will have done, um, standard background checks. We will have done also, um, you know, uh, pretty detailed searches of their background. I will go on record of saying that, um, a good experienced school leader has had to make difficult decisions. And oftentimes by making difficult decisions, that ends up in the newspaper or on the, on the internet. So we will always have that conversation in advance of presenting a candidate to make sure that they are the right fit for you. Um, but I, I always want to, and I will mention this again when we're in that, when we're at that point in the process, that good leaders make, have to make tough decisions. So, but we will have been through that and be able to present that information to these tools to understand, to understand the full picture. Dan, is that, that what you were thinking of?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yep. So I think there's just a couple more slides for this portion of the agenda. We will need to make certain that we have contact information and that's one of the things for sure. I will, uh, walk out of this evening with hopefully carrying with me. That's my goal or my task I can task with, um, just who in house, um, whether it be Steve or some other individual that will be the, uh, uh, person who we will, let's kind of be in a daily contact, a regular contact to make sure things, for example, are prepared for school board meetings and such. Um, and also then the board contact. Um, uh, I know that Mitch has been in contact with Molly, um, regularly and so forth. Sometimes the board appoints another person from the personnel committee or something like that. But whatever the case might be, just so we have that information. But the next, the, we're going to be wrapping up pretty quickly. We want to make sure we meet this, uh, the, the, these dates that we've laid out this evening. So, um, that's an important piece. Unfortunately, when you see my name pop up on your cell phone, that will be happening in the future, I can, I can promise. Um, I think there's just a couple more, um, slides just to point out, you know, some of the advertising options. These are very easy for the school district to do. Um, you have memberships, obviously, and, um, the, uh, school, uh, business officials, um, uh, Tom and the School Board Association, all of you. So that's a very easy place to place right on the one website, actually pretty much one stop shop, um, uh, here in Wisconsin. Um, so as soon as that profile is ready, we'll have a couple others. Yep. Um, there's a couple others we might offer up and suggest depending upon all the profile shapes up. Um, everything from, um, school leadership, um, to some of those more specific inside higher education and such. I think there maybe is just one more slide there, um, that's make some other suggestions with OSAA, depending upon the national search reach and so forth, we have all those available to us. Um, material wise, um, in addition to that profile will be, um, I know you've got some good videos already in existence about your district, but those are also other things we can embed in the application process so can people can get to know you. Um, if they're not right down the, uh, not right down the street, but they can get to know you. So we'll be, um, collecting those items if you see bullet tips there, um, from you. And some of those we can already, um, I've already gathered just from your website and also from things like your school report card and other things that are available either through the Department of Public Instruction or else at the district site. Um, I think we're wrapping up here. I just, um, you know, there's a lot of words on here, so I'll try to capture it and let, then I'll let my, my colleagues jump in. But we are really, this is your search. We really, um, uh, I believe greatly that the most important thing we can do is, is, uh, put a, uh, put a good leader, uh, in the position where they can lead and they can make a difference in the lives of their students and the community. And so that's, that's how we approach our work. And, um, and we've been doing it for 25, I've been doing it for 10 years. The Rain Associates, the, the organization, we're over 30 and, and, uh, that's what we do. So I appreciate the time and, and Dan and Anne, any other comments?
Go ahead.
No, it's just, we're really excited to work with you. Uh, we know that this is the most important thing that you do as a school board is to make sure that your one employee, uh, is the best that you can find. So we are excited to help you on that journey.
I would just add that we continue to get to know you and have been excited about your mission, your vision, the thriving, contributing, belonging and the things that you have exhibited tonight with your students and your faculty show us that this is just going to be a really exciting opportunity for some great leaders. So again, thank you for entrusting us and we look forward to learning with and from you.
All right. I can, we can take any questions now and also I've said this before. I would like to see a candidate with a signed contract, not necessarily they'll start until July 1st or whatever, by, before the second board meeting in April, after the ele-
By before the second board meeting in April, after the election and pace of boardship change. I don't really want somebody coming in that doesn't have a clue. So. And 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 you can see from our timeline, we're well ahead of that. John, I I I heard that statement of we we started watching your board year prior before meeting archives. And we shared that last time around and we that's, we've listened to you, as we'll continue to listen to you to get, meet that timeline. And even build in a, uh you know, what we also do is we can help build that transition plan. And so that whenever that person is in place this school year, they're ready to go to the ground running July one and prior to the board meeting. So if that's his will of the war. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just offer that I do with everybody. Here we refer to the leader as a district administrator and not superintendent.
Okay.
So we can just make sure that I refer to that.
So referencing back to this list, I will stick around later this evening to um finalize some things there and what we can. I I realize it's a lot coming at you at once and some of you are new to this process. Um there's a few other things just so I, hopefully. Um we have um set the table um for our journey together here the next few months and uh know what's, know what's coming up. So. Thank you, and I'll stick around like this.
Thank you. All right. Next up. Operation Referendum, operational referendum.
So I'll introduce Mr. Parsons. This is our new business manager. It's his first official meeting he's at. And so uh we're throwing him right into the frying pan.
I figured, let's continue with big topics and make this one next. So um as mentioned, Tom Parsons, uh new business manager. Uh first off, I wanna thank everyone in the district for great warm welcome. A couple of weeks in now, um especially everyone in the district office. I feel like I have a lot of dumb small questions and Paige is like, yeah, whatever, I'll help you. So no, that's, that's been great. Um I look forward to working with and for all of you. Um I mean, certainly, this is gonna be a big topic and. Um as a small district office, I mean, we wear a lot of hats. Right when I started was the gym floor and the HBAC and. Uh day one of school toilets were backing up and so I got thrown right into it. So it was a pretty neat there. Um as I run through things, and this is a blanket statement anytime, um I always, always welcome questions. Um I really love finance numbers. I'm a data nerd. Um but I want them to make sense to the masses. I think that's very important in any business leader. And so I welcome questions and um John made a great comment earlier to me before the meeting started. If I say an acronym or something that doesn't make sense. Let me know. Thankfully, early on, I don't know a lot of the school acronyms, so I'll use the real words. Um so. With that said, we'll jump into it. Um so as mentioned, this is uh discussing just the referendum. But kind of embedded within this to forecast and plan forward is a five-year projection. Um so with any financial model, we wanna always state our major assumptions. Um with the school budget, with the referendum, with the forecast, there's a lot of variables. So we do always wanna state what is static or what is changing. Um so with this model, we are projecting flat membership or enrollment. Uh we do have a five percent salary increase each year, except for in one scenario, and we'll talk about that. Uh six and a half percent health insurance increase per year, and that's going on kind of an average. Um expense side and really with any kind of financial projection, it's good to go a tad high on expenses, low on revenue. So hopefully you have. Um a good projection there. Uh one thing I do wanna call out, and we'll talk about this further on in the presentation, is. Um in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh we did have the reduction in staffing and that was kind of attrition through retirements. Um and that came to about uh five hundred thousand dollars. Um it is also important for everyone to know, be aware of, that when we talk about revenue, the S R three funds, uh the remaining five hundred and thirty-six will be exhausted. So not only are those funds depleted down to zero, but we have the operational referendum coming off. So we have had the S R dollars plus the referendum dollars the last several years. So we wanna be mindful of kind of those two components occurring at the same time. Um also in this model, this model is um a template from Baird, uh one of the the vendors very commonly used. They do not have a uh year five in their forecast. Um in some of the internal office stuff I've done, I've added on a year five, but they. They pull in a lot of state projections. So we'll only see the first four years. Um but we wanna, we wanna be mindful that um we wanna add an additional five hundred and fifty thousand um to that, that fifth year. And I'll talk through that, but just so when we talk five years, but you only see four, that is just how the file is set up. So um to set a baseline here, uh this is a base scenario. This is if we did nothing, no operational referendum. Um this is what the scenario would look like. Um our first column is our budget year, so that just started here in July first. Um these are preliminary budget numbers that have been passed. We'll have our final October number later. Um but this is very, very close. And so I'm just gonna focus on a few lines, but certainly if anything jumps out. Um again, ask questions, whether that's during or at the end. Uh but we'll focus on the surplus or deficit. And so this current financial year that we're in, we're looking at about a one hundred and ninety-three thousand surplus. Um that is at the very bottom there, and don't feel you have to scroll. It's actually in a good spot. They, we do have the one point two of referendum money in there. So keeping in mind, this is the last year of that one point two current state referendum. So if we did nothing, then there's the four years going out. And again, focusing on that deficit line, uh we would immediately flip to a negative. Um and then that grows by about five hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand-ish per year. So that four point one would grow to then four point six. So we're adding that five hundred thousand to that. Um the other line item that I wanna focus on is the fund balance. Um and within schools, that's not technically our our cash. It's not all cash, but largely. Um but the fund balance is what we really wanna focus to operate to payer bills. Um right now, we are at about a fifteen percent or three point seven million. Um I would say that's a comfortable state in looking at historically with the referendum. Um as I looked at the the last several years back, that's about where we're at. Um as we look at the first year of no referendum, it shrinks drastically. And then in year two, it would actually flip to a negative. And so that's where it becomes extremely, extremely scary um for a school district. So that is our do-nothing state. So then let's go next slide. Um one item that was discussed and to kind of show the impact, one of the largest financial components of a district is uh the H R side, the salary side, salaries and benefits. So this scenario here is a do-nothing as far as the referendum. And this is saying that a salary increase would not be provided. So basically salaries would be frozen. Um so to kind of s- show that difference of ser- salaries and benefits, it does increase each year. Um from that first slide, that was the five percent and the six and a half percent. Um it would slow down the negative and the fund balance shrinking. But as we could see, really still year two, it's about at zero or negative and then grows, and we're still at a negative each year. So maintaining all one hundred percent of the staff, but freezing the staff um would would not fix um the scenario from going negative. So then what we look at is potentials for a referendum. And so with this, we'll talk through four scenarios. Um and scenario one and three use a similar philosophy and two and four use a similar philosophy. So yeah, kind of the same spot. So what we looked at with this is basically ran that five-year projection out. Determine what the shortage or the money needed would be. Um and it comes out to roughly eighteen million dollars over five years. And then just divided that by five and reapplied those dollars back. So then it would be three point seven per year. So we can see that on the non-recurring referendum uh line of three point seven consistently each year. In our surplus line, jumping back up to the bolded, um it then puts us in a comfortable position. Um in year four, it does go negative and year five would be negative. The item that we do wanna keep in mind there is we do have the surplus in the earlier years. So fund balance grows and then fund balance comes back down. So we would be at about that eighteen percent. We would have that year five. So really, the end of year five would put us very similar to where we are current states. We would go up and come back down. As far as our fund balance or our kind of savings account. Um so that's one proposal, scenario one. So then if we go to scenario two, we took that same eighteen million dollars. Um and I really worked with um the P M A group on this, and we basically just kind of went backwards. And this is a tiered or a stepped approach. So we're starting at year one of two and a half, year two, et cetera, taking a step up. As we look at our surplus and deficit line, uh the bolded line there puts us very close to even each year. Um so it it keeps it much more consistent as far as kind of that expenses versus revenue. It keeps our fund balance very consistent. Um and one thing this would do, we'll talk about this at the end, is this would be a small annual increase on the mill rate and then taxes. Um but it would have less of a year one transition, and there's a picture later on for that. Um but this is kind of just a different mindset to get to the same endpoint. So then one thing we talked about as an admin team, um and you, you can come to the next one. Um is that those exact same two philosophies, really a straight line and a stepped approach, I'll call them. Um rather than using the eighteen million, we looked at an additional five hundred thousand each year. Um and so a- adding that back on, whether that's through the tier or through the straight line. Um and how we really came to that was back on that first slide of the salary reductions. One thing we do wanna keep in mind is those salary reductions took place. Those salary reductions are in place right now. And so in order to grow programs, grow activities, um really looking at that. Um those financials, not only for staff, but also for support staff and being able to build those environments, build those programs. Um and so really giving the same philosophy, but a slightly larger dollar amount. So this one has that four point two as a straight line. As we can see, in year one, it does have a fairly large surplus of uh roughly one point seven million. And then that starts to shrink down. And actually, year five would be a tad negative. Um but we're using that surplus that we had kind of run and loaded on year one and year two. Um but keeps um first four years positive and then a small negative year five. So if we go to scenario four, again, stepped approach, it's adding five hundred thousand per year. So now rather than being very close to even, uh it does have that surplus of starting at the six hundred nine thousand and going forward. Um the thing to keep in mind is that it's not really a true six hundred nine thousand surplus. If we think about it as that additional five hundred thousand in the referendum, it's not intended to grow the fund balance. It's intended to in turn be reinvested back into the school. So expenses would grow by five hundred thousand, bringing it back down to one hundred and nine thousand. Um so it it would be taking that surplus and reinvesting it back into the schools. Um and so those are really the four models on kind of the data standpoint. Go ahead to the next one. So um then what a lot of you will be asked is what is this going to do to the mill rate? What is this gonna do to my taxes? Um so the vendor that had prepared this, P M A, um had put this into uh four nice graphs for us following that same order. So keeping in mind, uh twenty-two, twenty-three is the financial year that just closed, two and thirtieth. We are in twenty-three, twenty-four, so we actually are on that that line that's showing the small D line. Um when the referendum, the operational referendum discontinues, that line would continue to go down. Um if we did nothing. Um and so that's less dollars um potentially coming into the school district. Um these are the four scenarios of the operational referendum. And so again, keeping in mind, one and two is the three point, or is the eighteen million. And then three and four is the additional two and a half million, five hundred thousand over five years. So where I made a little bit of a reference to this, um as we can see in scenario one and scenario three, that's the straight line. And so when we go from the current state seven point six nine and then we apply that new referendum. Um taxpayers would see um any increase that first year, and then it would stabilize or actually start to, start to decrease a small amount. In scenarios two and four with that stepped um approach, there would be less of a year one impact. But then there would be a small impact, assuming all others stay constant. There would be a small increase each year. So that's really the difference on the mill rate, which then converts over to taxes and and tax rate. So uh next slide. Uh so then uh running this, so it's kind of how does it impact me type scenario. Again, one, two, three and four, same order, same philosophies. So one and two was that smaller amount, three and four the larger amount. With one and three being the flat line, two and four being the step. So then we can see if somebody had a one hundred thousand dollar house in the current year budget, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of their tax bill. Would be the school district line. We know there's other lines in our tax bills. And then um that impact then would on year one then go to our yellow shaded. Um so if we're looking at scenario one, which was that three point seven straight line, uh the taxpayer would see a two hundred and eighteen dollar increase. If they had a, in it, there is a two percent es- escalation, so a hundred and two thousand dollar home would see a two hundred and eighteen dollar increase. But then they would actually see it level off quite a bit, a small down, a small up. But then if we look at scenario two, less of an increase in year one and then a small increase going forward. So that's where I wanted to make sure we had it in a line graph and then really kind of the the numbers right in front of me. Also, a lot of times, um this is referenced on a one hundred thousand house or per one hundred thousand. So if they had a two hundred thousand dollar house, we would just double it, you know, two hundred and fifty, two and a half. Um so that's the way that um the math works and how we can have the conversations out in the community um as far as the impact. Lot of information, but I open it up to questions, comments.
Any more questions?
One of the things is we have, the next item is the survey for the referendum. Um and we need to share a, an amount in that survey with our community so that they have an understanding of what we're asking for. So this number, even though the board isn't gonna approve the resolution till January, we wanna get feedback from the community in the very near future. So we don't, you don't necessarily have to block in a number, but we probably wanna determine a, you know. Not a too small of a number, and then in January, you're approving a larger amount. You may wanna, you know, if we're not sure, approve a a bigger amount and ask for feedback, and then you can always adjust that. Um yesterday in our admin team meeting, we looked at these scenarios that Mr. Parsons prepared. And lot of concern about costs, um some of them being the personnel costs that were cut this last spring to balance the budget. And how those things are gonna be impacting um our ability to achieve our strategic plan. Mainly the uh instructional coaches and other supports for teaching and learning. And then um there's always rising costs and needs for um instructional assistance and educational assistance. And then we heard um Mr. Herndon talk about uh the significant facility needs. That um those first two options that Mr. Parsons shared is just maintaining where we're at on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Without being able to add anything to it. So that's where we asked him, you know, maybe create us two more scenarios. That put back that five hundred sixty thousand dollars that was cut out of last budget, at least to allow us to cover some of those things that I just mentioned.
Steve, my understanding of that is that would just recoup what wasn't replaced. That's not gonna then help maintenance for facilities, correct?
Well, right. Now, the district's been doing a nice job adding to your Fund Forty-Six to, for capital improvements. Um over the years. And so if you put that five hundred sixty thousand back in, it would probably lend in our current budget. The opportunity to continue to invest in that capital improvement fund. If we don't, then we're continuing saying, what are we doing? Are we, are we supporting personnel to help teaching and learning, are we fixing things that are broken? It wouldn't solve all of our problems adding just five hundred sixty thousand, but it would, it would allow us opportunity to continue to use some of our current budget that's already budgeted.
Okay, because what I, what I thought I heard was putting that five hundred thousand back into curriculum and staffing, which doesn't address the facilities at all.
Correct, but there's currently money in our budget that are used for facilities, whereas it's certainly not enough.
Clearly not enough, right, okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, so, right, if you want to address the staffing and all those things that Mr. Hernan mentioned in the short term, then we have to reset.
Right, and that's kind of why I was wanting him to maybe give a ballpark figure that he wasn't willing to give, and I get it, right? But, you know, I'm thinking referendum and thinking about total dollars and what to ask and what the community can support. Because we have to ask for what we need.
Yes, unless if what we need, the community's not willing to support, then that's the fine line that you want.
But that's the survey.
Right, and so my guess is, you know, adding another four to five hundred thousand a year over five years is going to give him the type of budget, you know, two, two point five million dollars to fix all this stuff.
Well, that's helpful.
And I mean, that's a ballpark figure, just knowing the things that he has to do. So that's kind of the million dollar question is what, what number do we put in the survey to give our community a, a honest assessment of what our needs are? You know, to me, for sure, could you put that, those graphs back up in page?
Yeah, you can.
And just scroll back to, right. I, you know, this one, either three or four seems like the minimum amount we could get by with. If the board is interested in addressing Mr. Hernan's needs, you need to probably add another two point five million dollars to that amount over five years. And the the tax impact, scroll to that one page and the next one down. You know, so another five hundred thousand onto that. You know, those numbers. We're talking about a two hundred thousand dollar home, we're talking four to five hundred dollars a year increase in that first year, if we use scenario four. On a two hundred thousand dollar home, you know, right now at, at the amount, we're at, oh, three hundred and what, fifty thousand? On a two hundred thousand dollar home. If you added another five hundred thousand onto that.
Under the?
Onto scenario four, per year.
Because that was four point two. Another ten, little over ten percent. So, yeah, that hundred and seventy-four, we go up like twenty bucks.
So around two hundred dollars, gosh, per hundred thousand, so four hundred. That, that's a big ask, but it's, I think, certainly could justify the need.
I think we need to ask for what we need.
Well, I mean, so listen to Jack. The heat pumps, if we replace all the heat pumps, it's going to be about three hundred thousand per, you know, he only did three, but you know, how many scales that's going to be lost? So if you added two hundred fifty, that could probably almost take care of your heat pumps to this, per year. So like a million dollars for four years. And then you could address some of the honeywell stuff, I mean, that, to your point, yes, I think you need more money, but.
And I do know that in our, in our capital improvement fund, there's between three and five, three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in there right now. So we could cover some of those things with that current amount, but then it's gone. You know, you don't necessarily want to spend.
Yeah, if you're never punishing.
Yeah. So that could maybe do heat pumps, but then what's going to do the lights, and what's going to do the next project? You don't want to drain it down to zero if you don't have to.
So Mitch, according to what you were just saying, what is the amount?
I mean, yeah, without doing a huge survey and getting a dollar amount, I, I know that's why, I'm just doing some quick math here. I would say at least two hundred fifty for sure on top of that, to take care of some of those maintenance issues. But he's right, these heat pumps, they're, they're, they're ancient, they're old, they're never going to stop having problems. We have a geothermal field that's not efficient, it wasn't designed right, I shouldn't say designed right, it was not. It's twenty years old, it's different technologies now, the things need to get changed. I mean, you know, that's the biggest thing is HVAC, hands down. And, and unfortunately, lights, yeah, you can buy an LED light for sixty bucks. You know, you, you can do that really easy, a lot of these things that Jack's talking about, it's not a sixty dollar fix, it's thousands of dollar fix, and you can't, it's either all or nothing.
We are working on a priority list with the HVAC team. Try to see what we can do and maintain ourselves and then replace the worst first. Which is definitely the way we have to do it as of now, and even with a referendum, having some funds going towards that stuff. We definitely are doing what has to be done first. We're not just saying, let's just do it all, we're, we're doing the most necessary things for this. And I can, when I touch base with the HVAC team, I can share that.
I just think we should ask for what we need, and then the community will take the survey and they'll let us know if that's too much. And then we can always scale back and re-prioritize and.
Right, yeah, you can scale back, and then one other thing is with a referendum that ties into the tax levy, and the tax levy's passed each year, and you don't have to do the full tax levy, so that's always a scenario as well.
So what I hear us saying is if we took scenario four and added one point two five million on to it, which would be two hundred fifty thousand a year, and use that number in our survey to generate feedback from the community. And then adjust that if necessary based on the survey results?
Uh, yeah, it was, in my opinion, that would be a minimal, and, you know, I don't want to be overwhelming and not get good data back either, so, you know, I want to be realistic. That, that's just my opinion, I'm interested in what other board members say. What Jack's doing is just putting bandings on, it's not going away. It, it will not go away.
And that's flushing money down the toilet, if you're not upgrading to newer, modern equipment. You just continually, you know, it's like an old car, you just keep fixing it, fixing it, fixing it, you could have bought a new one and save some of that money on all those repairs, so that's what Jack's doing right now.
Well, that's why I also don't want to underestimate, if the one point two isn't enough, ask for what we need. And then we can justify that, we're all going to be ambassadors, right? And then we can explain this to people, that this is just what we need to maintain. And then, and then put the blame where it needs to be, and it's.
If we keep ignoring the maintenance, eventually, it's going to affect student learning and staff happiness, as the rooms are cold, the rooms are dirty, their things broke in their rooms. So let's take that into consideration too when we start thinking about this stuff. How is it going to affect staff and students?
I would like the facilities committee to come back with a number.
Do we need a number now to go to?
Well, if we want survey results in time to go to the resolution.
I, I agree with you, but I don't know.
We, we need to collect the data here in the next six weeks so that.
Why can't the facilities committee get together? You know, I mean, and you've got all of those heads looking at it, and, you know, you can have a more thorough discussion than we can have here.
The final survey, they would like us to prove it the next meeting, so we have a couple of windows to see if we can generate a more accurate cost for Jackson's, and then add to it, show everything.
I'd be more comfortable with that, frankly.
Okay, we can do that, we'll start off the meeting.
Sounds good. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, moving on, referendum surveys, do you want to move to?
One of the things, when we interviewed Mr. Parsons, that made me feel strongly in his candidacy is his, he has a nice way of explaining things, and I don't know if you all felt the same way, but that's some complex stuff he just talked about, and he made it clear and easy to understand, so thank you, Tom, thank you, Matt. Uh, this is kind of the timeline that School Perceptions talked to us about the last time they were here. And so you can see we're on the thirteenth, you just, we're going to be looking at a preliminary draft here in a few minutes. They'd like to, they have the twenty-fifth, I think the meeting's actually the twenty-seventh, approved the draft. Then we would get the ball rolling and get it out to all of our constituents and get results back, if you can scroll down a little bit, Paige. We, the deadline for the survey would be the twentieth of November. They would crunch all the numbers, get all the data ready for us, and be at our December thirteenth meeting to present the results to you. Which gives us then about a month to determine what you want to ask for your resolution and valid question to be on the ballot. So I think the timeline is, is very manageable. It does hinge on us getting that survey approved at the next board meeting. You know, in a crunch, we could schedule a special board meeting if we needed another week or so to finalize that. But my recommendation would be we shoot for the September twenty-seventh meeting. And, you know, if, if we can't hit that target, we'll, we'll adjust that on that meeting. So Paige, if you could bring up the, the survey. Okay, so a lot of these things, School Perceptions talked to us about on the first page or two, the last time they met. There's a bunch of different ways they'll make it available to staff, scroll down page. They're going to email, we already gave them an email list of all of our staff and parents. They'll mail a, they're going to, we're getting them a mailing list of every resident in the district, and they will mail that survey to them. And then the respondents can either go online and complete it, or they can fill out the paper survey and mail it back. Keep going down page. They ask a bunch of demographic data so that they can give us good data based on age range, where you live, whether you're an employee of the district, whether you have kids in the district, all those kinds of things.
There's too many documents tonight, people. All right, here we go.
And then they ask what school kids go to, keep scrolling down. This next question is a good question for us, so that based on how they like to receive information is how we will provide it regarding the referendum campaign. You know, we picked the top couple of ways that they like to receive information, make sure we're providing all our referendum information in that regard. Financial background, you'll see a few X's there that Tom is still working on filling in so that the community, everybody in the district can see our financial history. And I, this next slide, I think, oop, nope, too far, right there. Gives us a good picture to show to our community. We've been, we've been frugal with our funds since back in twenty fourteen, fifteen, our mill rate has been going down noticeably, which is a good thing for taxpayers. Now, unfortunately, we're not the only people asking for money on our tax bill, so this doesn't mean their tax bill is going down. Just the, the school portion, mill rate has been going down. Everybody else and, you know, the state in general has prevented the bills from going up too much. Next slide here. Talking about funding challenges, and this slide is not consistent with what we just talked about. We'll be updating this as we get our referendum scenario together. But we would provide in the survey an explanation of, okay, here's what we're asking for, whether it's two point five million a year or the, the other numbers we just talked about, and how much your taxes are going to go up per one hundred thousand dollars so that people are seeing the impact on their taxes. The money will be used for, if you scroll down a little bit, Paige. Current programs and class sizes, attracting retaining staff, pay increase in operational costs, and funding building maintenance. So that's a lot of things we just talked about this evening. And then would you support it? Yes, definitely yes, probably yes, undecided, probably no, definitely no. School Perceptions uses these choices in all their surveys and, and then are able to make pretty strong predictions based on the results about the chance for success for a referendum. And you'll see underneath that comment, comments, questions, suggestions, people are actually able to provide written responses that School Perceptions will interpret and categorize into groupings for us. Next slide, please. This slide also, I believe, is a really good slide. And again, the gray bars don't reflect the numbers we were just talking about. We would change those once we determine how much we're going to ask for. But you can see the trend, twenty-three, twenty-four, the mill rate's going down. Even, and those numbers are not too far off of the maximum amount we were just discussing. It's going to still be far below some of those earlier years in our tax history, which I think we can again use to share with the community, yes, we're asking for more, but it's less than we were asking for fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and quite a few of those blue bars on this chart. So it's always hard to ask people for money and, and have them say yes. But I think if we can share with them that the district is that conservative with funds and that what we're going to ask for within this right here is still the original numbers. Next question. And this again, I think, helps to tell our story. If someone is going to say, no, we don't support the referendum, okay, then how are we going to save money? Are we going to increase class size? Are we going to reduce middle school, high school course offerings? Are we going to reduce elementary specials, athletics, and fine arts? Go down page, technology, building maintenance, curriculum updates, academic support services, transportation. Most people are going to say no to all of those, or I'm not sure. No, I don't want to get rid of any of that, that's all important, we need all that stuff. And it will hopefully show people, well, you have two choices, either to yes to the amount, or you gotta be willing to lose some of these things. And, and I don't know, you know, as a educator, but also as a parent and as a community person, I'm not comfortable losing any of those things. And I think that, you know, most conscientious community members want a strong school system, and all those are important. Yeah, they could put comments there and say, you know, we think you should cut something else, and we'll get that input. Here is one area where I'm not sure we need this, especially since Rain Associates was just here. They know we're looking for a new superintendent, and they thought, well, we could generate feedback from the community on what they're looking for, but I think you guys will be doing your own collection of data, so my suggestion is we would take this off of the survey. But in a few minutes, you can tell me what, what your thoughts are. And again, so we would, if we remove that, this whole page would be gone. And same pretty much with this next plan, next page. Um, in the admin team, we reviewed this survey as well and on the surface, this looks like, yeah, it'd be nice to know what the community thinks. But just last summer, you did a strategic plan, had community come together, identified our mission and vision, what our priorities are, what we're gonna focus our time and effort on. And this might be redundant, you know, a year after you did that. You know, so we kinda thought, we don't need to ask these things because we just went through this strategic process last year, but as a board, you can tell us your thoughts on that. And then um, overall satisfaction. My thought on this is, you know, when I came on board, I heard there was some um, concerns about different aspects of the, of the schools last year and whether it be staff or community having some, uh, giving some feedback about how the schools are doing. And this um, school perceptions uses a lot with their schools um, in their referendum surveys is, tell us how we're doing. And so you would have checked earlier on what school your kids go to. And so if you were Levi Leonard, this would pertain to Levi Leonard. If you had two schools, the parent would bill one out for each of the schools that they checked. And it talks about um, high quality instruction, keeping the public informed, managing funds, building pride in the community. This next question, um, I, I like this question, we used this in my previous district and you know, it's nice to see when they rate you highly on their likelihood to recommend you to a family or friend. And I think that can be a selling point for the district. With a high rating, using that in the cer- in the referendum campaign of, you know, we're highly rated by, you know, our district. We wanna continue that, we need the funds to keep doing it. And then they can give us some specifics about what they feel makes Evansville unique or special. And I'm sorry, that last part, everyone answers, this is the parent only part about your school, so you check the schools. And then it's gonna ask you questions about the school climate. Uh, scrolling down Paige is about learning and then belonging. Uh, they can share how they feel each school where their kids go is doing in those aspects. And again, good data um, to share in a referendum campaign, but also good data for a principal to use with their faculty to uh, make decisions about uh, where to focus their, their energies. And then the last page is just the mailing page that would um, you know, get it to the home for the parent to network, community network. So we're looking for some feedback from the board tonight. Again, this isn't an action item, but um, we would take any feedback you gave us and have school perceptions update it and uh, get it primed for you to hopefully take action on it the next meeting.
One more side of comments?
Well, Steve, I had the same reaction you did at first um, about the district administrator. Cause I thought, just didn't seem like it fit in there. Um, but then I thought that might be able to put people that might not come out for Ray and Associates and we, so as long as we could take that feedback and get it to Ray. So it'd be, so it'd be useful. I think it might be a demographic that we might not capture otherwise. So if we're really looking in at as much feedback as we can get, I just wanna make sure if they're gonna do it, we're gonna use it.
Would you be able to see some benefit to this?
Certainly um, any of the results, cause I'm assuming you're sharing the results in December, so with the entire board. Applicants will be looking at that. We will be already, the applicant pool will be, they will be looking at that information, learn more about and, and self-selecting.
It's late though.
Yeah, the timing.
Timing doesn't work. Then I would take it.
Just curious, Ray, Ray Associates, who do they target for their survey?
We will uh, make sure that you have the link um, for, put it on your website. Uh, any press releases, any ways that you normally communicate with local media. Um, and then any communication, parent newsletters, the school, that type of thing. You know, multiple, multiple ways to blanket it.
And it would be kind of a survey format that you can fill out?
It'll be very similar to this. And the thing that I was most curious about is I don't wanna, I don't wanna create any type of survey fatigue.
Right.
So I think it is really important that we, looking at the timeline for the Ray Associates, that's about a month ahead of time from the day. So that's really good.
So yeah, by the time we would get this, it might be past.
Just as a word.
So I'm here, let's probably mix that from the draft. How about the other um, page? Page? About future planning?
I have the same thought. If we're not gonna use it, don't ask it.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't wanna surveys longer than that to be, or is people, oh, oh.
Right.
So shorter or better, or I usually get that.
Okay, so I hear taking out the superintendent's or the district administrator's slide and the future planning slide. Any other thoughts or feedback you'd like to provide about the survey? That we could address?
I'm just curious, the part that says the money would be used to, and it just has four check marks, like I don't know what some of the current programs and class sizes are. Um, or what is our retention rate for staff and what are some of those building maintenance things? I know facilities will be, but we put maybe some specific things in there? So then people are like, it's not just, um, I wonder what they're doing. It's, oh, this is what they're doing.
And I think, you know, they, the way printing is, you always wanna have something in multiples of two for the pages. With us cutting, with us cutting out the future planning and the district administrator search, I think we have more room to add up some examples into that. And that's a good question, is there anything else? That, I mean, those are some pretty broad buckets that we use the, the money for. I don't know. Any other thoughts on what, I mean, operational costs pretty much covers everything.
Well, I think it would be helpful to be specific around that, especially around um, uh, staff and educator pay.
Yep.
That helps us pay them.
And I think we could put in some examples of where Evansville lies in the average salary for staff. Uh, operational costs, I know in my previous district, last year, the cost for electricity and heat saw about a forty percent spike, as you've probably seen in your own homes. That's a huge cost. So I think even throwing something in there like, energy costs have went up X amount of dollars in the last year. Uh, it's something a homeowner can relate to, like, oh yeah, so is mine. So um, we can, we'll put some examples and some specificity to those things and have it for you to look at.
And I think too, around the building maintenance, some of the things that you talked about, just around um, student achievements. You know, students are warm and cool when they are supposed to be. Staff and teachers are comfortable, you know, that's going to, you know, increase the ability to learn and the ability to, to teach. I mean, we know that not all schools have air conditioning and, and you know, they definitely impacts um, you know, everybody's ability to operate.
And I think it's one thing if you don't have it, another thing if you have it and it doesn't work, but the, but the colleague next to you is all comfortable and you're going, how come, you know, we're all sweaty? You know, that's worse than not having it at home, so.
And I think just reminding folks of that, cause some people might just be like, oh, the HVAC doesn't work, but I think really explaining the actual impact that happens in the learning environment, um, you know, can help people understand.
Yes.
And reminding people how old the building is.
Yeah, it's old.
Yep.
I mean, I think that's part of us, us board members to help relay that information.
Yeah.
Well, we have a, the school administrative association has a agreement with the public relations firm that provides, being a member of the association, provide support without any additional cost and will help us generate some high leverage talking points that we can share. You know, we can give them information, they can craft it for us in a way that, you know, is highly positive and, and we'll get good input from our community, so. Okay, well then I will, um, Steve, yes.
I think I wanted to comment.
Well, I was just gonna say, if I may, I think it's really great and really important that the board's focusing on this because once again, I think people really would wanna know where their money's going. Cause us in the school, we all know, yeah, there's issues with the HVAC, stuff like that. But community members might not. I think it's really important to establish that and give people the resources to figure out, oh, this is where this money needs to go. I think that should be really clear and maybe give, at least give people options to see even more information than you might provide in the survey, maybe on the website or through some form of social media.
Bring that one. And certainly once, and, and I appreciate that feedback. And this process is to help us kinda learn, okay, what's the threshold of our community to support a referendum? Once you approve the question, that's where we really step up the informational campaign and provide probably way more information than most people are gonna wanna see, but we wanna make sure that no stone goes unturned, no question goes unanswered. But I agree with you, Declan, that to make sure that that answer to the question, will you support this? That they feel they have enough information to give us a quality answer here because that, that's gonna drive what we ask for in January. So, thank you for that input. And you're right, we live in this building every day. We know what is good and what is bad, but if there are people who haven't probably been in a Evansville school in fifteen years, they don't know what's going on here. We have to make sure we teach them, help them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not moving on to education assistance staffing.
Good evening. So it was not too long ago that I was here presenting on staffing recommendations. Um, so you might be surprised to see me again. The reason why um, I am here is to explain to you that we have had a change in special education. Um, since the last time I was here, end of July, we have had over eleven students with disabilities enroll into our district. Um, the bulk of them, the week before school started. So what that means is that there has been um, an increase in need for support and services for students with disabilities. Um, right now, the bulk of that need is at um, Josh Erdahl's building, Levi Leonard. We have a lot of our littles that are coming in, some of our most vulnerable students who require the most support and the most services who are going without the support that they need. So at this point, we are, and you can see in that memo, I kind of outlines our obligations under IVA as our federal law that governs us and faith that just is that basic fundamental rights that we are making sure students with disabilities are receiving an education that is comparable to their peers, um, and also that they're able to make meaningful progress. So at this point, um, I am coming to the board to just kind of update you that we need to increase in our special education staffing. What that looks like at this moment in time is an additional two educational assistants at Levi Leonard to support those students that are without the support that they need for their individual education plan or IEP. Um, we're making it work right now because our staff are working overloading schedules. So what that means is they're giving up their prep, they're giving up their lunches. Um, we have administration acting as EAs, we have a lot of our general education staff kind of working a lot of double duties right now. Um, and it's not sustainable and it's not feasible. So they deserve to have more staff there as do the students. Um, and so I just wanted to give you that update. As there are additional needs, I'll make sure to update you. Um, right now, we have one pending hire and that kind of concludes that four that was provided at the last board meeting that I was at. Uh, we have since hired for four, we've hired three, waited until we needed that fourth. We have a student that does require um, someone to provide support for um, them one-on-one throughout the day. So that's where that fourth was um, posted and now we need an additional two.
So Janice, I'm confused, cause I went back and looked and the meeting after you were here, we approved four hires. And now we're approving potentially another one.
Two more. So since that meeting, we've had eleven more students.
And they all require one-on-ones?
No. So it's a domino effect. So we have case loads with uh, special education teachers that are required to provide the supports and services. What we had is um, a schedule that allowed prior to these now eleven um, special education case managers able to also support students throughout their day. Now with an increase in caseloads, they are unable to do both of those jobs. So special education teachers are the only educators that can provide specially designed instruction, which is the bulk of a student's um, IEP needs. Then they also have the support. Support is what the educational assistant would provide that allows them to um, stay safe in school, to access their education in school. And when we talk about students with more comprehensive disabilities and/or at Levi Leonard, the attending care, which is what we um, say to describe zipping up coats and just the, the, the basic needs to help us to access uh, what they need to during the day. Bathroom and, um, you know, just walking to, to classes with physical mobility concerns. So all of those things is where the educational assistant would help. Um, helping with lunch, helping with snack, helping with um, just all those basic needs. So what I am saying is that the one, the assist systems that we had available were for students that required um, one-on-one support and we still don't have enough. So we do have students that require one-on-one support who do not have that support scheduled into their day or the entire day. There is a lapse in services.
So are we out of compliance?
So we are having staff kind of work overloads right now. So we have case managers that are giving up their prep, giving up their um, lunch periods. We are making it work, but we are in very close violation of it.
Okay. And then the eleven new students, are they residents?
Yes. Yep. Yeah. It's exciting. It's exciting that they're moving in, it's exciting that they're coming to our district. Um, we have the obligation to service them and they have the right to receive those services. Any other questions?
No more questions? Moving on to discussion of board calendar.
Oh, I'm gonna head this one up a little bit. Um, in previous years and then we have gone over this list of sort of the important things that we need to make sure get done in every month um, of an academic year and through the summer. I wanna start from the bottom on this one and work our way up because with new kind of everyone in the district office, um, we wanna make sure that we set something straight so that I know what I need to be working on for each meeting and everyone in the office knows what they're working on for each meeting. Um, and so this is kind of what we had as notes um, for what happened at the first meeting of the month, the second meeting of the month. And then obviously every meeting, we're approving the minutes from the previous meeting, um, and the staff changes if there are any. Um, but I wanted to, I, I hope you all had a chance to take a look at this. I wanted to kind of come and just make sure that um, everyone's understanding is the same. I think Tom has some um, kind of, just some side notes um, on his part of things. Um, and just make sure that we're all expecting the same thing at every meeting. Tom, do you wanna speak?
You want me to kick it off? Yeah.
Yep, go for it.
So, yeah, and this was a question I had in the district office. Um, and I know there's obviously been a gap and were some inconsistencies, but really on the financial side.
But really, on the financial side, I, in a way, definitely wanna understand what was done in the past, but also I wanna think more toward the future of what does the board wanna see, what is important? And then also, I personally just think it would be logical to combine the financial summary and the bills and bank reconciliation into one report. Still having all of the information, but the bills and bank reconciliation on the second are actually really what feeds the financial summary, so they're kind of out of order right now.
Normally, they were all, both of those items were on the second.
Okay, and that was gonna be my second recommendation. And September was a perfect example with a holiday and then I was at a conference for two days. There haven't been a lot of business days, um, to close out the bur, close out the books, work with the office. Um, and so thankfully, bank statements have been balanced. I, you know, feel comfortable all the money's there, but then you have to get the money into all the accounts, the accounting accounts, so that way you can see revenue by source, expense by source. Um, but then also just in general, what you liked in the past, what you would like to see differently. Um, I think it's valuable for a treasures report or a financial summary to mean something to you, tell you some kind of a story or what's going well, whether you wanna see year-over-year actuals, actuals to budget. Um, and I don't need ultimate answers tonight and we could start with something and then kind of adjust as we go, um, as well. But I wanna make sure that, you know, a report I'm giving out, you're not just looking at it and being like, wow, that's a lot of numbers, and then go into the next attachment. Um, that really, you know, you're seeing some kind of snapshot or information and saying, hey, things look great or maybe it was a low month, but last month was great, you know, something of that sort. So really wanna throw it out there more for food for thought and we don't have to come to a resolution right now. Um, but that was a question I had right away is, what am I presenting, when and how and so.
Well, I think if you have access to board docs.
Yeah, yep.
You think you could go into that second meeting of most months and you can see the types of reports traditionally.
Yeah, yep, yep. And I did see, yeah, they were kind of bouncing around which meeting too. So I liked the second meeting. And so, yeah, the bills has the, um, and bank reconciliation will have your bills and your deposits and then your financial summary will have the cash flow one and the revenue by source, expense by source.
Right.
And also, if you don't like a certain graph, if you want a line graph instead of a bar graph or a pie graph, whatever, let me know and I can make those changes.
If you're willing to do lump to actual budget, I'd love it.
Well, it.
But I, you know, it's a lot of work and you've gotta find out how to tie yourself.
Well, in, I mean, actual to budget is something we should be looking at anyways. And I plan to anyway, so I might as well make it look pretty and share it with you.
I would be great, I would love that.
Yeah.
I'm only one person.
Well, I think, Kathy, isn't it true that with the budget, once we get like in, after the budget retreat and we start looking almost at every meeting at budget updating, where where we would get an update of where we sit with the budget at any given time as opposed to those financial summaries that we get?
Yeah.
So we would have budget updates on the first meeting, but that was more that, that where do we stand in terms of actuals and what's budget?
Okay, yeah.
And it and it was only after we had done like the budget retreat at the end of January. That's when usually when that started.
Okay, yeah, no, that.
If you're willing to do it all year round, that's fine.
Well, no, there could be some value and if it's a simple one pager that's an easy, easy set of, you know, grid of data or a visual, I mean, that's something I plan to be doing anyways for myself and the admin team. So, yeah, it makes sense to share it out.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And I think just to your point, Ellen, this was us going back and looking at board docs and piecing things together and piecing different documents together. So that's why we're here, we wanna make sure it's all consistent and everybody's on the same page.
Right.
Did anyone else have anything, um, I know as we're doing this? Um, there was one, oh, I think it's in November, um, looking, looking at the delegate for the WASB or the, the national conference, uh.
Well, and one of the things in my previous life, we just, when we did board reorganization in April, we just identified who that was gonna be and we did it all.
So, and I think, um, we could potentially do that, but we need to get to April.
Yeah, we need to do it for this.
Yeah, so just from your recommendation, Ellen, um, we'll move that selection of the delegate up. Right now, it's in November, we'll move it up to September, so it's done at the second meeting of September. If everybody's okay with that.
And then I think in January, um, Paige, there was something that Kathy thought wasn't relevant anymore.
Well, there were a couple of references to C S I updates.
What is C S I?
And how it was continued.
That's a great question.
So it was continuous system improvement, which is what the old strategic plan.
Okay.
We had different committees. So I think that language at least can be removed and then however you wanna provide a strategic planning update.
Yep.
You know.
And there's a few points in this where it said strategic plan update provided, um, but actually next the admin's plan breaks into this word to show you where we're from, yeah.
Great, so I mean, if that could be a regular yearly thing, however you guys wanna, admin wants to share that, I would, I'm fine with that. But I just know that the C S I is old.
Okay, well, what does that mean? Anything else that anyone else saw with this? This can be a living document, so it can, it can adjust as many kinds of things. Um, just getting a document that we can work off of and give them a little improvement is helpful.
Okay.
Moving on, we're going on to, uh, first reading of policies. Um, looks like there's a lot of them. I think, uh, Dr. Lutske, Steve and Crystal did a, went through and, I mean, is there any high level things you wanna talk about or is there individual questions any other board members have or?
I had a high level comment, I guess. So I noticed that the administrative guidelines weren't part of this. And for me, it's helpful to have a policy and the administrative guideline side by side. And I know some of them aren't always labeled the same, but there are some that were.
Sure.
And so if you do the administrative guidelines later, then I have to go back to look at the original policy anyway to see how they fit together. So my comment would be in the future, if you can do those together.
You know, and who that was and where it should be?
Well, there's a whole bunch of, yes. I know when we met with Neola and actually when I started, um, Ms. Burgos shared with me a bunch of, like, here's some stuff you should know. And she said, Neola recommended do the policies first, then do the administrative guidelines after. And when we met with Scott, he reiterated that, there's no, you don't have to do that. So I think we can, we can work on the six hundred level administrative guidelines next. And then as we do the seven hundred, we'll do them consecutively or together.
Yep, from what I understood from Scott, from Neola, it was that we have so much work to do on the policies to get them where they need to be so that we can do the semestral updates. Neola releases an update twice a year, so we need to look at our updates. But we're not to that point to be able to look at the updates. So I think it was more important to get the policies and then work through the administrative guidelines. I think that's what the thought process was, the likes you said, there's no sense at all if you don't have one.
We'll just start, and I I see your, I agree, if you have a policy and a guideline on the same topic and you only need the policy, not the guideline, then later you gotta go back and look at the policy to do the guideline, so.
Well, and there were a couple of policies where you struck the administrative guide. And so then I had to go back to the, look at the administrative guide to see why you would strike that and, you know, and the board needs to have a discussion about that, whether we want to agree with that or not. So it just created, so then I was like, what, I guess, wanna know what your philosophy or what premise you were working from.
Yeah, no, I get it. Right, and it makes sense to me. We were just kind of following Scott's feedback, which he'll say, no, that's great, go ahead, you know, you're just trying to help us.
For two years, we were doing it alongside, so.
Right, and 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 in part, because some of those administrative guidelines, um, they give the instructions for how the policy is going to be applied.
Yep.
And it's a whole lot easier to set the rules for how it's going to be applied when you're actually looking at the policy at the same time.
Well, I totally agree with you. So moving forward, we'll do that on administrative. And policies to meet at least monthly, chip away at meetings quickly.
Right, and have been served on that committee for four years. Forty-one policies at one meeting is a lot.
Yeah, no, we were ready, we decided at the end of the meeting, we won't be doing that anyway again at one time.
Thank you for doing the most.
Yes, thank you.
I did have one, uh, just comment about language on one particular policy, um, sixty-one fifty-two. Um, it's the one regarding school fees or fines. Um, it only uses the language parents when talking about, um, parents being able to pay for fees or lunches and things like that. We could just add inclusive language, caregiver.
We we had been using, we had been, in the other policies that we've already approved, those we had substituted families for parents because there was also a time that it was parent slash guardian. And and those references, I think, were all changed families.
I I wonder, because some people don't have a family member, a caregiver, that might not be a family member. So I just wonder, I mean, if, at least if we could change the language, not just using parents in there. That's just my, more inclusive way of looking at that, so I don't know.
And I I don't have my list, I grabbed my list today, but I have some that I considered like housekeeping items that I told Paige I would just send her, you know, take an apostrophes out that don't belong there, that type of thing.
Well, I know we had previously changed, you know, he, she, to they.
Yep.
And to be cognizant of the consistency there, that's still gonna be the policy.
Yeah, I saw those are changing there, using they.
So if I have a policy that I want you to look at, do I send that to you?
To Paige or Sandy or Crystal?
Yep.
And like, tell us what you want us to revisit and then we can, uh, do that at our next meeting. And that the thought would be the first meeting, we do a first read, second meeting, we do a second reading. And let's say of the forty-one, there's two that someone has a question, how we could hold those two, make the motion to approve the other thirty-nine, however many you have. We'd go back and revisit and start that process over again with the, however many we have to work for.
Okay. I'll send a little, there's not gonna be tons to portion, don't bring out.
I know, I had one that that I didn't understand because it, as you read through the policy, it says you have to choose either option one or option two and in the policy, no option is chosen.
Right.
So I don't know.
Yeah, if you shoot us that, we'll shoot this one too.
Yes. And also the crowdfunding is one of them, that you struck the A G and I think it would be important to have that A G. So I'd like a more in-depth discussion and policy about that.
And we could probably bring that A G to the next meeting and get it scheduled. I appreciate that feedback, we'll, um, you know, our goal is to keep making progress on these because as Paige mentioned, I think we're four, four or six updates behind and they can't do the updates until we get them revised the first time. So we wanna catch up with all those updates.
Thanks again.
Yeah.
Thank you, so get the policy committee their concerns and begin addressing. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, we'll go on to business action items. The first one is F F A overnight trips, twenty-third through to twenty-four.
No, after twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Oh.
They have a whole bunch of trips.
Every month, I guess.
I move to approve the F F A overnight trips for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Uh, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Now let's vote.
If you want me to say something, I can.
It's eight twenty-one at night.
Of course, you've sat in this meeting so far, so.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Some opportunity, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have fun.
Uh, next action item, student council overnight retreat request.
I move to approve the student council overnight retreat request as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Now let's vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, it's important.
Uh, next item on the agenda is consent. No, is there anything that wants to be moved? Matt, I'm gonna team a motion.
I move to approve consent, uh, agenda items A through C.
Motion second.
I second.
Motion second. Vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next item, future agenda. Is there anybody that wants to add, change the future agenda?
I just have a quick question regarding the regular meeting and the annual meeting. We noticed that the annual meeting has not been in board docs per se, but in a separate document that's not in board docs. Do we want to continue that way or do we want to have everything in board docs so that if there is anything, that it's all public and it goes to the same place, everybody, you know, certified? Is there a reason you didn't put them on board docs?
It was in there if you go back to twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one it was. So I didn't know if there was like something weird last year where there was a reason why it wasn't in there.
I'm trying to remember, but it may have just been oversight. Well, just location, so we were here, right? And if public comes, I mean, just setting up the room and so that people can see it, and in my adjustment, it just, okay.
The, one of the things is all of our board meeting documents, we have to archive them forever. And the best place to archive them is a place like board docs where, you know, they, they have the server and they save them for us. So my suggestion would be, like, we put the policy committee meeting on there last time too. So that it's easy to find and it's easy to archive. Um, annual meeting seems like it should be on there too.
Um, thanks. All right, thank you.
Somebody else want any changes? Well, good. So I think, uh, I entertain a five-minute break before we go into the executive session.
Aye.